Won't be able to have a back and forth with the planning board members or the applicants verbally. All their communication will be via chat or perhaps messages they sent in earlier to staff for the record. Prior to opening our first public hearing, we have a public comment period that's open to anybody to come to the podium to speak about an issue that might be on their mind. They want to raise about city, about the city. But if you're here for our two hearings, one hearing on a new two family at forty-three Summer Street, and the second hearing for a site plan amendment for sixth floor at seventy-nine King Street, hold your comments until those items come up. So is there anyone here who would like to make a comment for the planning board? And we'll go to the in-person crowd first. All three of you are good. All right. Carolyn, is there anybody out on?
I don't see any hand. I'm sorry. Yes, there is one chat. Hello, my name is Hannah Bai and I'm in Butter at One Alder Street. Okay, so this is about the public hearing. So I won't read that now since you haven't opened the public hearing.
But okey doke. All right, anyone else who would like to make a comment? David, good evening. Yeah, you're doc. You're doc for half an hour. All right then, let us now open up a public hearing for site plan review to build the two family by New Way Homes Inc. at forty-three Summer Street, map ID thirty-one B dash zero three oh. Before we start the hearing, in order to be as transparent as possible, I want to let everybody know that I'm the president of Friends of Northampton Trails, and one of the projects we run is called the Bikes for All Project, which accepts donated bicycles, and then we have volunteer mechanics who fix those bicycles and then give them out to folks who can't afford them. This operation was taking place on this property in the red garage that has just been knocked down. We had a big fans of our Bikes for All Project were the previous owners, Elizabeth, Elizabeth and Tom Kane, and they gave us that property rent free. When Mr. Hansel and New Way Homes purchased the property about a year ago, he continued that same arrangement. Since then, about two months ago, the project has relocated up to Florence prior to the building being demolished. Thank goodness. So I just wanted to let everybody know that there's no financial kind of linkage between our two organizations. So that being said, please, we'll hear from the applicant.
All right, great. Rebecca Lee with Arlevak Associates located at Forty School Street in Westfield here tonight with the applicant, Mr. John Hansel, to present the proposed duplex and associated site improvements at forty-three Summer Street.
And then just is your mic green?
Yes. He turned it off. Thank you. All right. You good? Okay, perfect. So this site is located at the corner of State Street and Summer Street. Currently, it's located in the urban residency district. It has an existing duplex on the property as well as a barn and a paved parking area. The applicant is proposing to demolish that barn and the parking area as well as relocate the curb cut to accommodate the new site improvements. So this is the layout plan that shows the proposed duplex to the north of the property. The existing duplex will remain. The new duplex will actually be bring the site under compliance as far as setbacks go. So we are meeting all setback requirements and all other dimensional regulation requirements. We're providing adequate parking throughout the site. Two new spaces are going to be located to the west side of the new duplex, and those will be using permeable pavers for LID technology to kind of incorporate that into site improvements. And then there will be six parking spaces within the paved area as well as a shared drive there. We're also proposing a bike locker that's located right here where my mouse is. And as I mentioned, the existing duplex will remain. So as far as the proposed grading goes, the new grading is going to mimic the existing grading just because there's not much space to work with and we have to, you know, meet existing grades around the existing structure. We are proposing a catch basin to mitigate stormwater runoff from the proposed parking area, which is being connected to an existing drainage structure in State Street. However, we received comment from DPW that we can talk about later on where Doug McDonald would prefer that we do not install that, excuse me, install that connection. The water is coming from the main off of State Street and sewer will connect into the existing sewer line that's due north of the property. And that summarizes the site plan set. I'll bring up the architecturals for your.
Before you leave the site plan, just tell us about the, the drive, the entrance to the lot. You're going from two curb cuts to one. Could you just show us that?
Yeah, sure. Yep. So the two curb cuts, the existing curb cuts, actually, let me go to the demo plan. It might be a little bit easier to see here. So one curb cut is located here where my mouse is. Hopefully you can see that. The other curb cut is located right here, and we are reducing the two down to one as you had mentioned. And that will be in between these radii here that you can see kind of in a boulder lines, line type. So I saw that comment too. It's right now it's proposed at twenty feet. Reduced down to fifteen, understood. If there's no further questions on the site plans that I can jump over to the architecturals if that would please the board. Okay, great. So these are just, you know, some typical concepts of what we're planning on doing. These are the floor plans here. So the idea is to have four bedroom, how many baths? How many baths? Two and a half. There's a covered porch on the front, and then two parking spaces will be on the back end of the, of the building. So that summarizes the, the presentation. We did receive a couple of comments from Carolyn from the planning department, which we can go through now if that's what the board would like to do. Okay, great. And Carolyn, feel free to stop me at any time. First comment was in regards to a traffic study. Though a traffic study is not required, traffic mitigation is required. Section eleven point six two needs to be addressed based on the assumption of two additional peak hour trips, one per unit. A payment in lieu of traffic mitigation can be made in the amount of $1,000 per unit or a one-time payment of $2,000, and that's understood. Second question, site plan requires an upgrade of the sidewalk around the property to cement concrete minimally four feet wide. However, because the city is proposing an upgrade along State Street that will likely include a curb extension at State Street and Summer intersection, the extents of what this project would be required to upgrade would stop short of the intersection on both frontages. So plan should be submitted showing sidewalk replacement from about five feet south of the hydrant on State to the northerly property line on State and starting from about the no parking sign on Summer to the westerly property line on Summer. I had spoken to Carolyn a little bit on this one, and I can pull up the site plan so that we can show you. How do I? All right. So because the limit of work is really only in that northern portion of the site there, we would like to propose the replacement of the sidewalk within that limit of work.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Yeah, sure. So I think in Carolyn, you know, feel free to chime in, but originally it was noted that we would have to replace the sidewalk from about this location down here where my mouse is. Unfortunately, the hydrant isn't being shown to the northern property line. And then also from the no parking sign on off of Summer to the westerly property line. But we're not doing any improvements in that area, so we think it would be appropriate to only have to replace the sidewalk along the, the frontage within the limit of work.
And just to be clear, the reason for the points of starting and stopping around the corner is that DPW has engaged engineering firm and worked at close to the corner and within the process of doing design for intersection improvements along the corner to call traffic. And so this is one of the intersections where like the improvement doesn't make sense to require a sidewalk all the way around the corner when it would just be ripped up to accommodate the construction for either raised crosswalks or raised intersection, depending on what the final design is. So I worked with Donald Scannell to think about sort of what makes sense for the sidewalk improvements and so we came up with this hydrant north basically on the State Street side.
You know, I didn't get a chance to look closely at the Summer Street sidewalk. I don't know what kind of condition that's in, but it certainly can't be as bad as a State Street side, I don't think. Pretty bad?
Equally bad, yeah.
Equally bad, yeah.
It's one of those, you know.
Asphalt on top of concrete.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So the DPW is not, the, the proposed work is not along Summer? Confused us today. DPW work is around the corner, so it'll, it'll be that whole intersection, but it doesn't go up Summer Street beyond probably where the no parking sign is currently on Summer Street, so whatever that is tended to be beyond the intersection is sort of probably, probably where that work limit will terminate.
It's for us for concrete sidewalks?
Yes.
And what is the thought on the? I guess the word, even though it's one, one piece of property that's not in.
Well. Yeah, I, I, I think in the past, if any work is done on a given lot, we've asked them to replace each one piece of property.
You can't take advantage of the property on, over just here and not
Right.
do anything over here. Yeah, you have to take the.
Well, we've no other opportunity to get a sidewalk there, so it would just be like asphalt for the next fifty years.
To the west of that, going up the hill on Summer?
On this property, right. Like this is the only chance we have to.
Will make several in a lot easier too. That'll probably be our recommendation then as a board to ask the applicant, to, to, to condition the applicant to install new sidewalk on all portions of the sidewalk, other than in the areas noted by the DPW and staff.
Okay, even though it's outside of.
The work area, right. We're thinking, we're considering the whole property.
I mean, you are taking advantage of the whole property, the value of the property is going out, everything is considered part of it. Very common.
Come on up to the. Oh, yeah. Oh, hold on, John, right? We haven't opened up for public comment yet. You want to wait and then we'll ask? Well, but she should really, yeah. That's the presenter.
Okay, so we'll, we'll let here John speak to that one, and then moving on to the next comment here. So you have no landscape and no lighting plan. You may have told me that you were only proposing building lights, which is totally appropriate, so that's fine, just confirm. So this is confirmation that there's not going to be any site lighting, just the typical, you know, building wall pack lighting, and that will all be, you know, in accordance with the regulations, dark sky compliance and what. For landscaping, I would expect at least two trees on the State Street side somewhere, given the length of the street frontage, and understood. That's not a problem. And then Carolyn, I don't have the DPW comments handy. Do you?
Yeah.
Okay.
Proposing it connects to the sewer line on the basement property.
Street sewer, as such, the sewer service may be subject to backups. And so then they recommend this, or they state the standard of connecting directly to the sewer with a minimum one percent slope. And then, and so that can be taken care of during building permit or pre-building permit review. They noted the driveway was wider than the fifteen feet allowed without approval by the planning board and recommended fifteen feet. The DPW won't allow the drain connection as designed. And this is the storm drain question with the catch basin and plans include notes and details for erosion and sediment control, but the measures have not been included on the site drawings. Construction plans should include specification and location of erosion and sediment control measures in the drawings.
There's no major trees, no major tree protection, unfortunately.
So they just don't want to structure it all?
Oh, well, there's.
There's a reduction in overall impervious cover on the site and so, and, and no, they're comfortable with the way and the fact that they're providing the impervious or the pervious pavement in the back, and they were fine with that.
Part of the reduction in impervious area.
If, yes, partially, yes. If we eliminated that permeable pavers, we would still be less than what was there before, just, you know, as an additional measure.
I was, I was just curious if the site detail shows like an underdrain for that permeable pavers, but I don't know where that underdrain would be like to. I was gonna ask if it would go to that catch basin, but no.
Right, right. So I think this is just to assist with infiltration into the soil itself. There doesn't need to be necessarily a positive connection. It's just to, like I said, it's, you know, in a gravel pit and to help the water get into the back into the soil. Because that's a common practice with, you know, our, the infiltration basins that we normally design. We usually do like an underdrain along the bottom of the basin just to help that runoff get into the soil quicker. Correct. Convey, right, right.
Other questions from the board? Are we open to public hearing?
Was you asking for a new connection in the street?
Oh, for sewer, yes, to serve these buildings, and it just has to be done in accordance with their standard for connecting to the sewer.
I thought that was a little odd that you had to cross into the neighbor's property to connect. Is the sewer line right, right out there on the street? I thought maybe that's why you did it that way. It's, there was, it was.
So that manhole that we're connecting into is right on the property line, so kind of the, the path of least resistance instead of, you know, tearing up the road, there's a, an available sewer manhole that's right on the property line.
Oh, I see. And then it goes into the street right there. So they just want you to just connect in the street.
One line for the duplex, or they didn't say?
They didn't say, and that has changed at various times depending on whether, I, I think there's, I don't know. I'll leave that to them.
Them being not DPW.
Because they have control over how they want sewer connections to be made.
Because there are four bedrooms each, right? It could be two and a half baths, could be a busy place. In your opening remarks, you mentioned that there was a, a, currently a barn there that was going to be taken down, so that has been taken down already.
I think it's in the process, yeah.
And I just want to clarify, I, I assume it went through a demolition delay process, and if, if you're not familiar, I.
I'm gonna defer to the applicant for that one.
All right, Mr. Hansel, would you?
The proper channels.
Okay, great. I didn't quite see on the architectural drawings, the second egress from the second floor, how does that work? Does it drop down into the backyards?
It's a single unit. You don't need a second unit.
Upstairs?
In the bedroom windows.
I mean, at the time of the, the building permit, it will have to have however many egress.
You don't need a second egress on the second floor. You have the windows, they have to be curled, regular size, certain height off the floor, so there's no egress on the second floor.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions? All right, well, why don't we open it up to the public then? Is there anyone in the audience here in the chambers who would like to speak?
I understand how the city likes to get everything out of the developer and do sidewalks on both sides, but it gets to the point where that's going to run twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars. And I understand that, I, my belief is the city should take care of its own stuff, but I understand what you want to do. But I'm not going on that side, and it gets to the point where I could just do an A and R on this lot very simply, do a single family by right, not even have to come in front of the board, and not fix any sidewalks.
And do it.
That's what I might do then. That's what I'm trying to say to you.
And do it. That's like this simplest solution.
Because you make it sound like you're doing such a favor to do, let me do a field hole.
Ho- hold on, Sam, Sam, hold on. Let's walk through this.
So let's be clear, I am doing a thing.
I'm glad you see it that way.
You should too.
No, Mr. Hansel, we understand your, your objection, the, the cost factor, yep. But this is what we've done with other applicants. There's a precedent for this. We've asked them to do this. We're really working hard to make sure that sidewalks are upgraded when we have this opportunity. It's, I, I don't know the exact measurements there of that piece on Summer, but yep.
I, I would like to take something, like firstly, one of the points about Intel is that that everyone gets the benefit, and there's a cost, and one of the costs is that the property, which is getting almost divided, this situation, part of that has, everything has to get done. That is a fair consideration. And to be challenged by someone is absurd.
Sam, Sam, no, hold, hold on, let's, let's not editorialize too much. We've had other applicants talk to us about the cost of the given project too. Yeah.
A fair thing. The cost is a fair thing. There's lots of projects that don't have it because of cost.
Right, right.
That is not.
Can we just say, look, there's a lot of us in the city who think the city should take on more of the cost of sidewalks, and I encourage people, if that's your opinion, to vote for city councilors who will approve the budget that will pay for all that. Excuse me, right now, we don't have that situation. The only way we have to get any new sidewalks in the city is to ask property owners to do it. We understand there's a cost involved, and if you want to go A and R and do it that way and by right, that's fine, that's legal, and, and A and R has its own cost, and you can weigh the, the, the cost and benefits of that. We have no other way to get new sidewalks in the city other than this right now, and that's nothing we can do about it, no matter how much we wish DPW was building sidewalks like crazy up and down the streets. But this is the world we live in right now. So we just send an election and we'll see what happens, you know?
I, I also want to bring it back to the ordinance that there are site plan approval requirements that are triggered when an applicant comes forward that relates to making sure that there are safe pedestrian access points to and from the property. So it's not just, it's not about extracting from the applicant, but it's for making sure that every project that comes along is meeting those standards of providing safe vehicular, pedestrian and bicycle access. And so if the sidewalks are deficient, which is clearly spelled out in the ordinance, it's the applicant's responsibility to make sure they're not deficient to meet those standards. And that's been, you know, an issue, a code requirement for a number of years. So it's not just something that's new, but it's also obviously very important in the core neighborhoods where walking is what we're trying to encourage and is a key component of living in sort of the downtown neighborhood.
Thank you. Um, other comments from the folks in the in-person meeting at council chambers?
I have a, I'm a neighbor to this property.
Just give us your name, please.
And I had a question about the parking because I didn't see it. Maybe I did look at the plans ahead of time, and was mentioned tonight that there are two spaces, parking spaces behind the new building. But what is access to that, and are they spaces one behind the other? And it seems like eight spaces or eight spaces total for, I can't remember how many bedrooms are in the original building, but we're adding eight bedrooms here. And I know that there are rules about how many spaces that have to be made when developers come in, but it seems like that's enough. That's. Yes, and I may not have read.
Great. Great, sure. If you would just highlight those parking areas again for us.
So there's going to be three here, three, three, oh, I'm, I'll do my mouse, three here, three here, and then two back to back here.
Here, so. That just seems like an odd access when you have so many units, or so many bedrooms in this piece of property.
But in this district, that's all that we're requiring, yeah. And it's pretty common in urban areas to have that back-to-back parking where you have to negotiate those two parking spaces. Yeah. But thank you. And any other?
And the parking is based on units, not bedrooms.
And the parking is based on units, not bedrooms.
All right, uh, Carolyn, is there anybody in the Zoom portion that?
Um, so I'll start with a chat from the beginning, um, Hannah By, well, my name is Hannah By, I'm in a butter at one Aldrich Street. The proposed structure is something in my house, I'm concerned about lighting. Hope the outside lighting will be down or focused, and also that there are no motion sensor lighting from the outside back or backside of the building, they're very disrupted and would shine into my bedroom window. Also, the houses in this neighborhood are old, uh, my house was constructed in eighteen seventy, the pounding and banging that went on when the barn was taken down rattled my house to the foundation. And I hope that during construction of the new house, pounding and banging of that magnitude will be kept to a minimum. Actually, any lights on the front side of the building will shine into my bedroom, not the backside, as I said in my original note. So then the last comment by Hannah By also, never mind, I was reading the plan wrong, my house is on the backside. And that's all the chats that we have.
Good, beginning, middle and end of story.
Is there any screening from, on this property to the abutting properties?
No, there's no screening.
Sorry, we worry about headlights from these new uh, parking spaces, or any more?
Well, they, they sign into a large driveway and a barn, a back driveway, they don't come into the abutting house in that area. And, and I would say to Hannah By that, uh, the applicant is just proposing small lights over each doorway. I'm downcasting, they shouldn't be. They're sitting, they're, they're not allowed to have any light cast beyond the property line. I'm not sure about most timers, but uh, that again is something that's certainly up to the applicant, as long as the light isn't cast beyond the property line, the applicant or the homeowner can do as they wish.
I believe there's also a property between one Aldridge Street and this property anyway.
And in terms of the construction noise, that is what it is, you know, they, there's regulations about when they can start construction and when they can end it, but in terms of noise, um, you have to live with it for a little while and they won't have the heavy machinery in there that they did for the destruction. So I think, um, you won't notice it as much. All right, that was the last chat. All right. So uh, now let's hold on a minute, so we don't close the public hearing in case we have questions for the applicant, any other questions? We're pretty clear on the conditions and I think the applicant is. Mosen to close the public hearing? All right, Mosen's made and seconded, any discussion? All right, all in favor closing the public hearing? Animus? So now I will walk through the conditions that we talked about. Yep, fifteen feet. We have a payment, um, in lieu of a traffic study for traffic mitigation that the applicant understands. Do we need to specify whether it's all at once or it's in two payments?
Uh, typically you require it before certificate of occupancy, so um, and it's not typically divided because they get I mean, they could do occupancy for each one.
Ah, okay.
And that way it could be divided. Um, I think, uh, so I had recommended that related to the overall plans, that revised plans um, showing detail of the sidewalk replacement, uh, long statement, some are best submitted in the revised plans, those plans should also show an arrow or um, driveway opening, final plans. And um. There was.
Sewer connection?
Yeah, they could do the, um, and the sewer connection, yeah, should be in the revised plans as well.
Shade trees?
What was shade tree supposed to be? Is there a? Is there a tree built there?
There is not, but if they, they can plant on the lawn.
And uh, the thing about silting devices is just boilerplate on erosion control.
Yes, well, they showed, they described it, so that should be on the plan, um, right. Um, I would also recommend that um the maintenance plan for the previous permeable pavement is forwarded with the decisions that it carries with the decision for the property owners. For that driveway section.
Uh, on Summer Street with the aforementioned condition.
Hey, Mosen's made and seconded to approve the application for to build a family home by New Way. Any more discussing? No, I just, you know, I, I editorialize and say, I appreciate it, we need more apartments in downtown near the downtown area, so this is exactly what the city wants. Um, so which, uh, I'm glad that applications like this are coming before us. All right. If there are no other discussing, all those in favor of approving the application with the conditions mentioned, okay. Mosen's made, proved unanimous. Thank you, thank you both, good luck with your project. All right.
Have a good night.
If anybody need a break, we can move right into our second one. This, you want to get your technology going?
I will get the technology going, yes. Yeah, do you want to drive? Your step is at the back, hopefully.
Right. So you can just.
Nice school, let's do again for that. So, uh, at this point, we're going to open up a, a public hearing posted for seven twenty tonight for a major site plan amendment at a sixth floor by seventy-nine King Street LLC. At seventy-nine King Street, map ID thirty-one B twenty-one C, so the applicant is seventy-nine King Street LLC. Thank you.
Hello, everyone, I'm David Cubic with BK SK Architects, the architect on the project. Um, we're happy to be back, um, um, with the drawings today. There are a few things since we last saw you that we've kind of reconfigured a little bit on the interior. Uh, but mostly what we're here, um, to talk about is the addition of the sixth floor and how that meets the newly uh, issued form-based zoning, which at the time, when we first submitted wasn't in effect. So that's really sort of the recap of where we were and where we are today. So as we look um, at the ground floor, a simple sort of what's that? Oh, oh, for Zoom, yeah. Good point, yeah. Yeah, if we hit that, I think that'll All right, that's better, right? Um, so again, largely everything is about, um, the sixth floor addition. Looking here at the ground floor, everything remains, um, the same. There's a small commercial space facing King Street. Um, the residential lobby, just behind that with access along the side. Um, we still have, um, the uh, parking facility here at the ground floor, which is, um, now an open garage and it's actually two levels um, of parking, which we'll show you. Um, the entrance remains the same, so the footprint and overall site plan is really identical to what we had submitted previously. Um, this is just sort of a upper level within the parking area, just to show how the stacker system works for the, um, cars in that area. Um, this was really the one change, which is here on the southwest corner of the second floor is where we've decided to locate some residential amenity spaces. So, uh, here, right on the corner, is sort of a multi-use kind of lounge space for the residents and then in this green tone, um, is a small gym, previously in our last application. Uh, those were apartments. There we go. And then moving up. This is the typical floor plan, which again, remains the same. And then on the sixth floor, it's the same floor plan, there's just a little bit of a setback along the front facade. Uh, here's the roof plan, you can see the compliant setback um, for that last story for the sixth floor. And we can talk about the height of that in, in the elevations. Um, the, this roof area is unoccupied, uh, the elevator and stair bulkhead rises to the roof. There is elevator access and then there's a residential amenity terrace here, um, and a large solar array on the, on the back. Um, we're still committed to having this project be built with mass timber and to passive house standards. Um, so we included this slide last time just to speak about the, the quality of construction and how it'll affect the overall indoor spaces. Um, it's still something that's a core component of our project, we're really excited about. The first level currently is a concrete podium, but we're going to still strive to see if we can't make that mass timber if it's a possibility. Um, we can't, we haven't gotten to that level of details, we'll go through CDs, but um, that is something we're going to explore, yeah. Um, as we get into the form-based zoning, um, you know, we, we had put this together in the last presentation, so we kept it. But, you know, looked carefully at the architectural language of, of the town of Northampton and the, um, a lo- a lot of the concepts that are baked into that zoning, um, we've taken and incorporated into our proposed design. So this is where we were last time, previously approved. Um, and um, you can see we had the articulated bays. The window rhythms were a little bit asymmetrical, um. And so in the new proposal, we have the articulated bays and we found a way to revise the floor plan to create a more even um, window rhythm, which was something that was talked about. Um, and you can see the additional floor here, um, setback uh, per the zoning. Um, one, one thing we've noted in our application is that the new form-based zoning asks, asks for that setback to occur at fifty-five feet. Um, we're showing it at fifty-nine, which is only four feet over and the real primary reason for that is to allow for the two levels of parking in the ground floor. Um, we have a seventeen-foot ground floor and we need that dimension, that's the kind of bare minimum to get two levels of parking. So, um, we thought that was a good reason to come to you with fifty-nine feet at that setback um, to allow for more, um, car parking for the residents and getting cars off the street, just taking less pressure off the town. Oh, I'm sorry, I don't know why it's doing that. There we go.
What is the shadowy area on top of the sixth floor?
That's the bulkhead, which is setback. So the middle portion of it is the elevator overrun. And the two lower sides, um, is where the fire stair comes up and the, just the elevator lobby that serves that elevator. Um, we do have some perspectives on the street to show you the visibility of that bulkhead. Um, because it's very setback, so, um, we looked at that in view studies so that you can see the impact of what that looks like.
And the elevator goes there to allow access to the amenities.
For the residents to access that public terrace.
And does the zoning speak to a use like that, yeah?
Um, so in terms of height, um, elevator shafts and, um, or bulkheads, I guess, are not counted in the overall height, so height, it just goes to the roof. Um, but not those elements that are above the roof.
It's not just like the overrun of the elevator.
Not to the best of you. Yeah, I think if you're going to provide public amenity spaces, you have to make them accessible.
Um, that's the roof plan, if it helps, you can see the, the lobby sitting in front of the two elevator cars, so it's just as wide as the elevator shaft, we tried to keep it modest, um, and then the, the fire stairs there. Um, we're equally motivated to keep it as small as possible, so we worked with Kone Elevator to understand the exact minimum overrun they need for that elevator and that's, that's what we're um, showing in this height. And again, we have some perspectives that I think will go a lot better than a straight-on elevation, which no one will ever really see. Uh, so this was previously approved. And again, uh, they're currently proposed. You can see both on the top left of the slide and the bottom right of the slide, the, the ten-foot setback. And, and the open garage. Yeah, so as we've been calling it, sort of the head building is, um, is clad in brick. And then the tail, if you will, um, above the second floor is a, um, a cement board with sort of a warm red tone to it, and then that ground floor is in brick, um, cladding the open garage area.
So speaking of materials, just to, um, I noted in the staff before back in, what else, in the twenty twenty-one, that, um, this was proof, it went to both central business architecture and the planning board. Um, central business architecture has, um, more and, um, looks towards creating, um, using the brick palette basically on, um, commercial buildings. It's not required, but it's, um, they certainly required more natural materials, um, for the front building and and sort of what to break, I think that's when they started um, down this path. Um, now it's under planning board jurisdiction, planning board doesn't deal in materials per se. Um, so the, it's still being proposed as, as brick for that front building, but again, it, or the front sort of massing. The but it's common that there are different materials in, um, the projects that both central business architecture review and planning board reviews for the front and then materials change towards the rear because it's really what's front and center invisible from Main Street or Pleasant Street or the other sites.
Thank you.
This is the previously proposed elevation, um, facing the rear lot line towards the, the bike path, um, and just an updated current elevation showing that, uh, material change and the, the open garage at the ground floor. Um, and then just two kind of axonometric views, just to show the project kind of overall. For a better understanding, you can see the two bulkheads. Here again. And then we thought, oh, and then, uh, I'm sure you saw this as part of the application, but we did take your form-based zoning and prepared a, you know, a thorough analysis, section by section, to state what was required and how we're proposing, um, and how we're complying. To state what was required and how we're proposing um and how we're complying with each of those sections. And then included um diagrams where relevant, so again capturing and defining the the requirements about articulated bays or window proportions or. Void to solid ratios, um and then the diagram there on the lower right, which let's see if I can't get into that. I'm gonna. Do this old fashioned way here. Nope, that's not gonna help. There we go. We just wanted to show. That building section where you can see the the stacked car parking system um that we're coordinating. And how that's nicely snugly fit into the ground floor height, which was the real primary reason um we're setting back at the height we are. Yeah, I think you could do it different ways, but the systems are pretty intelligent, so it's more like, here's my key fob, please get my car, then they shuffle. And then they bring your car to the bottom and then you can take your, you can get out your car, so it's actually like a.
Getting a Pepsi.
It's a little bit, yes.
And it takes into account the size of the pickup trucks and the answer being built these days.
Yeah, we'll have to obviously work with the specs to know what can fit and what can't. Um and again, that's why we want to make sure we've got enough room in there, so we're not excluding, you know, there might be like. Giant vehicles that can't make it in there, but standard vehicles.
He's waiting for the new code. Which I think allows higher mass timber. So I don't, I I've never done a mass timber residential, but I I don't know that, is it allowed right now under this code?
Yes, it is.
You could be five on top of one.
Uh yeah, you could do more than five, so it'd be type four. And I can have my colleagues speak up, but um it'd be construction class type four. Um and that that actually allows you a number of stories, yeah.
Oh, it's protected.
It's not, it's not like stick built where you're where you're capped at four or five, depending on what your class is. You can actually go a bunch higher than that.
I mean, we're not tying anything to the timber framing.
No, I don't think it has anything to do with zoning. It was.
But if you didn't switch, there may be dimensional things that changed based on the, I mean, you could come back, I guess, at that point.
Well, there's also interesting, I thought, and uh commendable that you had a ten foot floor to floor minimum for the upper floors. Um which is more than enough space to accommodate any mass timber solution, so we wouldn't be pumping it up unnecessarily for. For any of those reasons, but um the ten foot is plenty of space for that, yeah. Uh and then we just wanted to finish with this, which was two views from the north and two views from the south. And basically, the closer one is when you first start to see the bulkhead. And the second one that's further away just shows you. Um how the how the bulkhead will start to become visible, so again, from the north. From that far away. You know, you're just barely seeing a little ladder stick up. And then from a little farther away, you start to see a sliver. So the bulkhead location is really favorable because it's setback from the edges. So the elevations can be a little misleading. It looks like this really big box, but you know, set the fact that it's setback as far as it is. Is really uh helpful and it minimizes the the view of that. So again, from the south, you just see tiny little sliver there. As you start stepping back. You start to see a little bit more, but in a sort of very common bulkhead like language.
I would imagine during the hot summer, you'll want to add those popular sales up there now. Or some kind of shading structure. For the amenities, the garden, the rooftop garden. I'm only thinking down the road. I don't know if that impacts on our. Yeah, well, no, seriously, if they.
Or anything like that, can we even?
Is it temporary, though? I mean, if they, if it's just a sale, that's one thing, but what if they put up a a metal framework? With uh some kind of canopy over it. That just wouldn't be allowed by the building inspector.
I think you would have to come back if there's a structure but on or another and then we'd evaluate. Whether that is a building element that then.
So it might just be tables and umbrellas for all I know, but they might also go to those sales or some kind of structure or just.
Uh and that's our last page. Yes, we're complying with the overall building height. It's that initial fifth floor setback. Yeah, we're fifty-nine instead of fifty-five, and again, all driven because we're trying to provide that parking. But going through the chart, which is all here in every other, in every other respect here.
I think if I remember correctly, that was. Because we sort of set the zoning to be.
Without the ball.
And we received the list from the uh previous conditions that were put on the first application. I'm sure you've seen those again. Yeah, there was a little inconsistency, Carolyn, in your staff recommendation. It says that you have no concern about adding fifteen additional units to the building. And yet upfront, it said it was going from. Sixty-six units to eighty-eight, so I don't know which one is inconsistent.
Yeah, we also had a type, we also had a typo, which.
So it's not fifteen units, it's twenty or twenty-two.
Forty-two units, okay.
Yeah, I do know there were three versions, three revisions in the.
And I will say, um Department of Public Works, so there have been um. There's, there were some original conditions and and comments from Department of Public Works. First iteration, um and there's been a change in the way the storm waters um being proposed to be managed on the site. Those um revisions didn't get to DPW until yesterday. So they have asked for more time to review the storm water. This is a major project, so you look to the Department of Public Works for.
Um for a comment on the engineered part of the storm water, so since they just haven't had time to review it. I would recommend that you sort of look at everything you need, uh everything else except for the storm water. And then leave it open just in case there's some comment that comes back that might influence a condition. It wa- it shouldn't take long. DPW doesn't see red flags. It's just they haven't had a chance to review it.
So you're recommending we continue it then for two weeks.
Yeah, or well, because of the holiday, we're not coming in two weeks, but um December twelfth, I think it is.
The applicant understands that. They're not ready to throw a shovel in the ground on Thanksgiving.
December fourteenth, yeah.
So we're increasing the parking capacity of the building?
Uh no, that that parking facility remains the same. It was always that height and and that in that space in that building.
But the capacity of the cars, the reworking, it's gonna be the same amount of cars that you figured or you're adding because of the new twenty. Twenty spaces, you're providing more room for the cars.
We were always um. The parking count obviously is a flexible thing with the units as we moved around the amenity space, so there wasn't any sort of hard and fast rule about exactly how many spaces. We were trying to provide as it matched up to the units. We were just trying to provide as many as we could. Um so the parking count remains the same as it was previously, because that's just what fits.
Alright, well, the reason I'm asking is that we at our first hearing, we talked a little bit about the uh providing ample parking for bicycles. And I know a lot had been made about the residents, um and so. And we thought perhaps the original count for the bicycle parking and the covered parking was small. I don't know if you've looked at that. And if you have the room to increase that at all.
Um I have to try to remember exactly how it was proposed last time.
There, I think there were, there were thirty-two, thirty-two, thirty-four. I forget exactly how many parking spaces. In the detached sort of standalone building behind the, behind the larger structure, behind the residential building. That sort of parflit area, um similar to just what just got built at Village Com- uh North Commons at Village Hill.
With the covered roof and open area underneath and yeah.
That's what that rectangle is.
There are other versions of that that could probably accommodate more bikes if needed, but yeah, space space does get a little tight back there.
Because I would suggest that there'll be more, there's no other storage for these apartments um in the basement or.
But I think it's also a little bit uh. We have to sort of see how the market responds in terms of how many cars actually fill up, because we could easily convert some of those parking. Spaces to more bike storage, um so I think there's a little bit of flexibility there if we need to pivot. But this felt like the right balance in terms of how much space we had available to dedicate for both parking and bikes.
Alright, I would just suggest if you had a chance to increase the size of that covered storage area from thirty-two bikes to say. Even forty-two bikes, forty-six bikes, that's only, you know, one per apartment. Um there's eighty-eight apartment units, that's only one bicycle per apartment. Um often it'll be more, I think. That would be well worth it to the residents. I've been up to North Commons quite a bit. Those places fill up quickly because people tend to put other things underneath that covered storage. You know, um and there's no, they're left with no room for real bicycles, so.
I wonder if there's a comparable. Bob system to rotate bikes.
That would be nice.
There are just by code, um and we haven't looked at this in several years, but there is a point one space per dwelling unit required. Um so there clearly, and fifty percent of those have to be um long term, which means covered storage.
Point one, so that means for eighty-eight units, it would be nine bicycles. We definitely have to look at that if we want to.
But I I mean, I to your point, though, I think, which is probably what you were getting at, is. There are fewer cars per year, there's not a space for parking, one car per unit. Hopefully folks would have bicycles, so you won't have that opportunity to have that um gap filled with, yeah.
I mean, I think in this way that they're making a judgment about how many cars they want. I mean, they can, the market can decide how many bicycles, you know, they. Think they need, I mean, pretty common in an apartment to keep your bike in your apartment also. Well, let's not go down that road. Let's not get dra- dramatic tonight, I guess.
Alright, alright, I've just seen too many large apartment complexes around here where the bicycles are out in the rain and the snow and uh not covered. And it ruins them and people feel less, less um. Adaptable, less um willing to ride their bikes because of that. Okay, other questions from the board?
Alright, I'd like to move that we continue this public hearing to uh December fourteenth. At seven oh five P M. Seven oh four P M.
Was that a second, Sam?
And this is for the purpose of getting, receiving comments from the DPW about the revised store management plan.
We want the comments by seven oh three.
Probably when we get them.
So the only thing we're adding to the existing conditions is language around the waiver of the height on the setback of the sixth floor.
We can decide that next time.
Yeah, but.
So far, right, yeah.
So far, that's.
Why fifty-five feet as opposed to fifty-nine feet? Where did that number come from in the code?
It came um because in the urban residential C district, which is um the one on the edge of central business. The height um allowances there are fifty-five feet. And so it was thinking about what happens when you have a a structure built at the edge of this side street district. Um and creating um the first fifty-five feet, which is the same that's allowed in urban residential C. And then stepped that back at fifty-five feet on so that it um doesn't feel like it's. You know, seventy feet fully on that street front.
And to clarify, we're not abutting.
That's right, exactly.
The motion's been made and seconded to continue the hearing until December fourteenth at seven oh four.
Shouldn't we be taking public comment now so that if there are concerns, they can get addressed before next?
Didn't we already do that?
I don't think so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So would you mind if we hold the motion for a while? Table your motion, that sounds great. Robert Charles' order. Um so at this point, we'll open it up for the public. Is there anybody in council chambers here who would like to speak to this application? Hearing none, we'll move to the uh the Zoom room. Is there anyone virtually attending who would like to chat with staff?
No.
Nobody at this point, very good. Seems like all the butters are happy with your plans, so. Considered untabled. Okay, so people will be able to ask, come to the public comment on December fourteenth and comment on the application if they want. The public hearing is still open. Alright, all those in favor of uh both uh moving our hearing to December fourteenth? Continuing it. Alright, that's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah, no, I always do.
I don't have any minutes, but there's one A and R.
Of course. Quick hello.
I think we have to finish up our thing.
Yeah, couple of minutes, not much at all.
It'll be like five minutes, yeah.
Yeah, sure.
From the city, from the big city.
Carolyn, now.
What?
Was the giant parking lot right next, next to this lot, next to that?
Catholic church.
No, it's solar.
It's Wayland Insurance.
The um I should have asked this during public comment, but did the the fire department look at this again for the height in the extra floor? We have like a ladder truck that goes that high. It's coming, right?
Um I have a question about this. We're, I forget what the setback is, the side setback is like five feet or something.
Yeah.
But I I know it's not a zoning thing, it's a billing code thing of lot line windows. It's all legal, there's nothing next to it. And I think it's three, you can go up to three feet with residential, like if you're further than three. But like, what would be the process? Like, say they were three, two and a half feet, like it would be legal from zoning. But then if like Goggins wanted to build like the same building next door, there would be like. A lot line, you suddenly create a lot line issue. They would just deal with it as lawsuits basically and like figure it out privately.
I guess so. I mean, that's a problem now with, you know, the fire, but I mean, but can't you adjust that with um. Fire separated windows and.
Yeah, just on different construction.
Well, the new, whatever the new building would, but then layer building would suddenly be noncompliant because there'd be a building not so far from it anymore.
Yeah.
I don't know, I don't think it's, I think it's not an issue because they're more than three feet.
Yeah.
Um but if someone ever tries to build like right up to the lot line, it is an issue to think about. Well, the new building would have to pay for fire, you know, fire rated windows or deluge sprinklers or whatever, like there's different ways of dealing with it. It gets really complicated, but. It's much harder to deal with an existing building and so anyway.
This is. This is out on Ryan Road.
Long lots at Ryan Road.
Yeah, I need to, so here we go, Ryan Road, so. These, neither of these lots are conforming. If you see, there's this, this is sort of an old. Flag lot. Technically with twenty feet of width there. So really what they're doing is they're just swapping the rear lot portion, so. To give more land to. This parcel. And just resegmenting the back lot line, so. It's the same property owner, they're just doing a swap in the rear. And they will. There's still will be. That they're just, they want to add some to make it less noncompliant, this lot less non.
God bless them. I move we endorse the N R.
Motion's been made to technically endorse the A and R and Ryan Road, any discussion? All those in favor? All right. Motion's remain to adjourn at eight fifteen, early birds, second. All those in favor?